Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled meeting. For those of you who stayed from our earlier meeting, thank you for staying. We have established a quorum earlier at our special meeting, and I will just ask for a moment of silence at this time. Thank you, and if I can ask our commander to lead us in the pledge.
My pledge is to follow the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. We have no closed session report for today. We will be holding a closed session tomorrow because we had our special meeting, joint meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council. So with that, I will go to Mayor and Councilmember reports, announcements, and presentations. And I will look to my right. Councilmember Landham, would you like to start off?
Yes, thank you. In our special joint meeting with the Planning Commission earlier, we were updated on the status of the best project, offshore wind and the downtown design district. The WRF, or Water Reclamation Facility Subcommittee, had a meeting yesterday, and since I serve on that subcommittee, I thought I'd share a bit about the status of that as I understand it. The sewer plant is nearing completion. In fact, I've been told that it looks like the plant may have finally passed the challenge drinking water testing required. There still are issues with the wastewater line, or brine line, in that it failed to perform to the capacity that was designed and expected. There are several other details that still need to be resolved, but otherwise, this part of the mega project is completed. Now, much of the focus is on the IPR, or indirect potable reuse segment. This is the part where the treated wastewater is injected into, in this case, the Morro Bay Basin for a two-month period, after which it will be eligible for pumping out and reuse as top water. This process is a requirement of the different state and federal funding and financing sources that past City Council chose to obtain. This doesn't just comply with requirements. The water can be used for resiliency, replacing state water in times of extreme drought, as well as be used for landscaping purposes. The landscaping use, or the possible landscaping use, will serve to keep the system running so that when and if it is ever needed for more vital uses, it is in proper working condition. The numbers haven't been crunched yet, but this also holds potential for cost-saving and possible revenue. We were informed yesterday that the basis of design report for this is finished. From this information, the plan is to move forward with Phase 1 and install two more injection wells for a total of three, and to size all components for future wells. When triggered by an increase in population of 12,149 at full buildout as per planned Morro Bay, Phase 2 will kick in, and five more injection wells will be added for a total of eight. There is $10 million left in the budget for this project, and the estimate of Phase 1 is $8 to $10 million. The next step is to bring the basis of design report to the Public Works Advisory Board and then to City Council. And also, I have one more announcement. I am excited to announce that I will be hosting a town hall meeting that will take place here at the Morro Bay Vets Hall on Sunday, October 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00. This will be the first in a series of town hall meetings I will be hosting where each one will have a specific topic. The purpose of these meetings is to help build trust and confidence in local government, to increase transparency, and to open up a line of communication between residents, business owners, and the city. Basically, I want to hear from you. Short-term rentals, or vacation rentals, will be the topic at the meeting on October 15th, and you are all invited.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton.
I mentioned earlier, one of the things that I had done at the League of Cities Conference, and was looking at affordable housing and some interesting ways that cities had found to work together and make that more possible. But I also wanted to mention that Mr. Qualick and I met with some representatives of the Infrastructure Bank regarding possibilities for this building, maybe paving. It's a different sort of a way to find additional funding, and so I was pleased that we were able to do that together.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I just want to say that I also attended the League of California Cities Conference with Councilmember Barton, as well as Mr. Qualick, and also Chris Newmeyer, our city attorney, was there too. It was really an incredible learning opportunity. I think not just the sessions themselves that I was able to attend, but also more so the connections that I was able to make there, not only with our neighbors in San Luis County, but as well as some of the coastal communities, like Pacifica, Half Moon Bay, Hermosa, Ventura, communities that have a lot of the same issues and also have to deal with the Coastal Commission, and how they are actually looking to build relationships with that commission. So I found it very interesting in my conversations there, and I'm looking forward to having more. The Expo Center that Councilmember Barton mentioned was also incredible, just to meet, you know, some of the industries that were there, including, you know, various law firms and payroll firms, et cetera, but I think outside of porta-potties. But I think probably one of the most interesting ones was this company that produces these inflatable picture, like raft material, bright orange, and essentially, it's like another type of tool in lieu of sandbags. And I thought, what a great idea, something to think about. I'm not planting any ideas here for Mr. Qualick, but anyway, I just wanted to throw out there that this expo was a place to see some of the most modern, you know, kind of equipment that's out there that can be incorporated when we have emergencies like floods and things like that. So I also, on Mr. Qualick, want to say, give him a shout out. He was a part of a panel on behalf of us there after the storm, what we learned post-flood January and March, and he did an absolute phenomenal job as a panelist in that group representing us and what we learned, and our challenges that we have moving forward, as well as the kinds of planning that we have to do in the future. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Wicksum. Sounds like everyone's had a really busy last week, so thank you for going and attending the councilmembers and our staff that attended the convention. I appreciate your time doing that. I want to let you know that I attended Wade in the Water, the movie that was put on by Race Matters Slow, the City of Morro Bay. We contributed a donation to their whole braiding water event that's happening over the months of September and October. And I have to say that the theater here in Morro Bay was packed. It was a great experience. There was a lot of new faces that I've never seen, some familiar faces, just a lot of people there to learn. And in fact, I told my husband afterwards, I admittedly have not surfed since I was a young child, and that I live at the beach and I don't surf, and that's a shame. And so after watching that movie, I really am inspired to, you know, try it out again. But also, it was a great learning experience about, you know, the issues that people of color have dealt with here on the Central Coast and throughout California, and regarding that association to the beach and different bodies of water. So I'm just really appreciative of the fact that they brought that here to Morro Bay, and that I had the opportunity to go. Another thing I wanted to mention is if you ever are looking for events happening in Morro Bay, we have morrobay.org. It's our Visit Morro Bay website that talks all about local events happening here, and I just want to touch on a few. Our local high school here, Morro Bay High School, has a great drama department. If you're interested in going and supporting their drama department, they will, starting October 13th, they have Alice in Wonderland. And so if you'd like to find out more information, that's on the website here, as well as, it's been mentioned a few times here in our meetings, we have the Maritime Family Fun Day coming up. It's a free event on October 14th. I will be there dishing out blueberry muffins. If you want to see me in an apron handing out blueberry muffins, you'll have to come down and check it out. I'll be there. There's also, the Rotary is having their, the Rotary Club is having their Ducky Derby. That's important. And Shop Sip Stroll, that's a fun event that happens that the Chamber puts on. I absolutely love going to these events. This one, I think this one's downtown. I think they just had the Embarcadero one, right? So this one, the next one coming up is downtown, yeah. So that's on September 28th, so just around the corner, if you want to check that out. So there's lots of events on here. If you scroll through, check it out, support local events, it's important, and that's all I have for this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a busy few weeks. I did attend the Shop Sip and Stroll down on the Embarcadero. That was a lot of fun. And made it to Toons at Tideland, so I would remind everybody, this Thursday night is the last night for Toons at Tideland's from 5:00 to 7:00. Great music, great venue, well done, and a shout out to Kirk Carmichael and his team for putting that together with the seniors. And the downtown Sip and Stroll, yes, as Councilmember Ford said, is this Thursday. We had a lot of fun. Councilmember Landham and myself went. I had, we shared earlier some of the meetings we had. We met with Even Keel Wind to talk about their, meet their fishery liaison officer and talk about their plan. Thank you to our HR department for organizing a vaccine clinic for everyone for their flu shots. I had the opportunity to attend a badge pinning at the Police Department as they promoted an officer to sergeant, Sergeant Hasselbach, so that was exciting to see. We're always happy to see the promotions from within. And our Morro Bay 4-H Club, along with a lot of members of our community, participated in the Clean Shores last week down at the Rock and said that there was a lot to pick up. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but I appreciate that everyone was down there doing that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, who has a few things she'd like to share.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'm going to start my report on a sad note. To my right, my Admin Service Director and Assistant City Management is Johnson Rios. She is going to leave us to, had to, City of, sending mail to become their Assistant City Manager. And Sarah has been with City for over two years, and she had made significant contributions to City of Morro Bay. She will be missed. We want to thank her for all her accomplishments. And then, I don't know, Sarah, I want to say a few words, or it's up to you.
I just want to say thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to serve the community of Morro Bay, and I will follow you from afar and wish you all the best. Thank you very much.
Well, and then, on a, one of the sore lining, of course, sad about Sarah, but I like to look at the sore lining of everything, right? So I can still, I, yeah, so we can, the folks that Sarah left behind can, we can still have a fun together. So the sore lining of that, when I'm thinking about this, is really on Sarah's progression and all the other employees on their progression. It kind of reflect that the Morro Bay's culture of supporting, supporting the employees and supporting their personal pursuit, even when they're leaving the city, it's okay. We provide training, we provide assistance, we provide opportunities, and we know these employees will give us, make contributions to the city. So that's, that's one sore lining. I think I can feel proud of being part of the Morro Bay team for, and then, also additionally, Sarah announced her departure, and then we're already sad. And then, on the next day, the next couple of days, I would say that I was very, very pleased to get a support from the team. Some HR department with her together jumped right in to work on recruitment of interim director. So with some luck, we should be able to get an interim director started soon. And also, so really, I was, I was telling the HR department that in my last job, I would have to do all these pretty much on my own, so it's nice to have a bigger team. And also, I want to, I know, also, I want to just, I know I'm going to name people's names, I hope I'm not offending anybody, that Community Development Director Scott Graham also shared with me that, oh, be positive, we should be all right. I know it is probably, I was very pleasantly surprised by this coming from, coming from our own Scott, that expressed this kind of support. I really appreciate it, Mr. Graham. I hope that I'm not making you, I'm not embarrassing you, but you know, I'm very good at embarrassing people. But moving on, on a separate, more happier note, we want to talk about, I've been challenged by, well, having some fun, right? I can't always feel so sad and stuck in my office to work. I got to have some fun, so I started doing some, doing some research on events, and inspired by Mayor and then Councilmember Ford. I actually have more to add to your list. I could not believe that. Oh my, let's share this. I know we already covered a lot of the events, but I have, October 4th, there's California Coast Classic Bike Tour, stopping at Coyster Park. We did not know, I did not know that. Okay, here we go, add to your to our list. And then, October 15th, Scholaristic, Scholaristic, thank you, Scholaristic Surf Series, Surf Contest at Morro Rock Beach. So there's surf theory, if you want to, interested in surfing. And then, October 28th, we have Halloween at Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And on same day, 97.3 The Rock Radio Station fundraiser at Morro Bay Community Center. October 29th, witches and warlock paddle at Coleman Beach. Well, Halloween is coming. So, well, I have things to add. I'm so happy, you know, I add to all the events. Okay, now, I have to talk business again, I'm so sorry, it's my job. And we have, recently, we have received emails and comments from the community regarding homelessness in our community, and I know council and the community take this matter very seriously, and have already made homeless strategy as one of your strategic goals. And I, I'm a newcomer to the team. I know, however, that long before my arrival, the team has already been working on this and to come up with a working, come up with some recommendations. So the working group have been really working together, the chiefs, chief, Police Chief Watkins, which look really different today. Welcome, Tony. And then, Fire Chief, and then all the other executive chief worked together to discuss and do outreach, respond, and to the concerns. So today, Chief McQueen is going to have a brief summary to share with council and the public, and Mayor, if you would allow him, please.
All right, good evening. So the City of Morro Bay established a homeless working group in November of 2022, and the group consists of members from police, fire, public works, harbor, community development, and recreation. The working group was tasked with creating a plan for the city to address the homeless situation within our city limits. The group discusses current issues and events related to our unhoused community and look for ways to identify the impacts on city resources and on the community. The team meets regularly with and seeks advice from local resources and agencies that provide homeless services. Some of those groups include CAPSLOW, Transitions Mental Health Association, 805 Street Outreach, and many other support agencies that have the ability to provide information, programs, and assistance to Morro Bay. To date, the team has met approximately a dozen times in both formal and informal meetings to discuss the homeless-related issues. The team presented and discussed with the city manager a plan to bring on a homeless outreach coordinator. In February of 2023, this position was implemented. The case manager, Jason Holland, was introduced to the City Council and to the community at a council meeting earlier this year. A little more about Jason. He works 20 hours per week on Tuesdays and Thursdays in Morro Bay, and he works 20 hours per week in Atascadero on the alternate days. Jason brings a wealth of knowledge and experience in his field. He became involved in social services with CAPSLOW in 2016 because, in his words, "He saw a gap in the social services safety net and felt the need to get involved and make a difference." Jason believes the people that he helps every day in the field are the highest level of mental health and substance abuse disorder cases who are not being represented unless we go directly to them. Jason provides outreach and a direct connection to services such as drug and alcohol treatment, mental health support, and many other services. He works with organizations such as CAPSLOW, Veteran Support Services, and with Transitions Mental Health. Jason's also the regional trainer for the Social Security Administration SOAR program, which is Social Security, Outreach, Access, and Recovery. This program specifically increases the likelihood of a successful disability application, provides income to individuals, and health insurance through Medicare. Jason also works to complete CalFresh and Medi-Cal applications in the field, which helps provide food and medical health needs throughout the state. He works closely with our county public health to provide medical care to those who would otherwise not receive care. And just a little bit of the successes Jason's had. Recently, he's had success with two homeless individuals that had multiple arrests due to their substance abuse and mental health issues. One individual was the most arrested person in San Luis County, being arrested 23 times in one year. These two individuals are now in case management and have been successful in staying on their medications and have begun working to improve their situation. These are just small examples of the benefits of this outreach program, but ultimately, they provide a path to self-support and long-term housing for our unhoused population. In addition to the outreach and access to services, the team's currently working on two municipal code ordinances based on a review and a discussion of policies other cities throughout the state and the county have been implementing. We've also had many discussions with other agencies involved with homeless support services to determine what efforts have a positive impact in the areas of concern related to homelessness. We intend to present to the community and to the City Council two municipal code ordinances that will assist with addressing the major concerns that the community's been expressing to us. The staff and council have been receiving numerous phone calls, emails, and in-person discussions from the community related to the large homeless encampment along Quintana Road and elsewhere throughout the city, and our team intends to bring forward a presentation to staff, a presentation and a staff report recommending two ordinances for council review during the November council meeting. We will detail the content of these ordinances at the November council meeting as we're still reviewing and finalizing the content to ensure that they comply with all relevant guidelines, laws, and regulations. So I don't want to get into the weeds of what each ordinance has at this time because they're still pending legal review and all of that, but we'll bring a full staff report and try to answer any questions ahead of time with that. So that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Chief McQueen. I appreciate that. Anything else for you, Ms. Kimball? Thank you. And Ms. Johnson-Rios, we are thrilled and excited for your opportunities and saddened to see you go. Thank you for everything you've done for all of us in the community. We appreciate it. And I will see you next week still, right? Thank you. All right, not quite there, close. And just to add one more on, city manager, Kimball, tickets are available for the Morro Bay Community Foundation Sings, November 4th. So with that, we will move into presentations, and we have a proclamation this evening, recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas the City of Morro Bay is welcoming, inclusive, and dedicated to improving the quality of life for those who live, work, and visit here, whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting September 15th, the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month. And Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors came to America from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America, and where the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to create awareness of the contributions of people of Hispanic heritage to the American culture. Many people of Hispanic heritage serve as civil rights leaders and community organizers, politicians, teachers, journalists, first responders, artists, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and more. Hispanic Heritage Month is tied to the celebration of the rich tapestry of our community and reflects an array of distinct cultures, and whereas Morro Bay is fortunate to count among its population a large number of residents of Spanish and Latin American descent who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Morro Bay City Council does hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th of 2023 as National Hispanic Heritage Month and invite the community to learn more about Hispanic culture, people, traditions, and values that have positively enriched our community. And with that, I would like to invite C.R. Lara up to the podium, please.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, it is a pleasure to be here with you. I was here a year ago, and there is something unique about this picture today, and that is something very unusual. I think throughout all the cities in California, you're not going to find that many cities that have, or that are run by all women. So that means that Morro Bay is in good hands. I come before you, my name is C.R. Lara. I'm the president of Latino Risk Council, and I am moved by the content of, the content of your proclamation. I come before you to accept this proclamation in which you are recognizing the contribution of Hispanics to the communities, that makes them very special to live in those communities and to raise families. On behalf of Latino Risk Council, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lara. Thank you, sir. With that, we will move to public comment. I have some speaker slips I will start with. Those that are not on the agenda, first up will be Cheryl Wegman Craig, followed by Karen Aguilera, followed by Jane Heath. Karen Aguilera, followed by Jane Heath.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight because we have a code enforcement complaint about our fence. I feel that we've been targeted by my neighbor, if I'm not sure. So the fence height for our property was established at six feet when the grandfather clause was adopted. This is a permanent decision. When the ordinance was created and is in effect in perpetuity, to the fence line will forever be acceptable at the standard established of our property. The city's grandfather clause exists for the property, not each individual property owner of the said property. As long as the property exists, then, the six-foot fence height standard established by the city's own grandfather clause exists. At no time in U.S. history has it been found in case law that another person can tell you to move something on your property that is legally established in your property. The adjacent property owner has no leg to stand on regards to demanding that I move my fence line away from our shared property line. He is, in essence, demanding a personal easement with your own property for his own use, benefit, or pleasure. I can drive around town and see many front fences that are out of compliance. I'm not the only one. The fence at our house has been there since 1963. So why now, in 2023, is it an issue? We keep our property up. We love the city of Morro Bay. We came here to retire. We've come here all our lives, growing up. Our parents came here. Our grandparents came here to camp on the beach. And my neighbor has only lived here maybe a year and a half, and we've been here 13 years. So I'm asking you to please maybe grandfather in all the fences that are out of compliance. It's shrubbery. It's fences. I just don't know why we're being targeted. Thank you. Thank you.
I brought notes. I don't know why, after being a teacher, I can't stand in front of adults and talk without garbling, but I can do just fine in front of children. I want to begin by thanking council member Edwards for bringing up the issue about flooding because it's going to be a big deal this year. I have a friend who's a commodity broker, and he told me that El Nino is coming again. And you all may know this, but I think for more than anything, I feel like I want to tell this to the community at large. El Nino is coming again, and he said the farmers in the Midwest are very worried. He said this will be an El Nino that comes along every once, every 100 years. He says sometimes every 200 years. The Far East will be majorly impacted, specifically China, that will affect rice and soy. The Midwest will have a severe drought affecting corn production. And as you know, rice, corn, and soy are the foundation of our economy, whether you're talking about food to diapers or livestock. In fact, have you noticed how affordable pork is now? Pig farmers are slaughtering their pork in anticipation of not being able to buy what the cost of the feed is going to be in the springtime. So if you don't have one, it's a good idea to maybe buy a chest freezer and start stocking up. Also, stock up on rice and beans, too. But back to the weather. Morro Bay flooded last year, and we were all landlocked. I won't go into the area about the Vista proposal. It looks like we're going to have another opportunity to see it firsthand this winter. But my question to the council is this: Are we preparing for this flood? The reason why this year will be worse on top of this being lousy news is that our soil is saturated. I'm from Bakersfield. My husband and I visit our children and grandchildren regularly, and I haven't seen water on both sides of I-5 in September in 30 years. There are cotton tails and reeds growing on both sides of the freeway right outside of the Tulley Wildlife Refuge. We should be filling up sandbags right now. Perhaps, and this is just a proposal, that we can get together as a community and begin flood preparedness, specifically Highway 1 underpass that separates North and South Morro Bay. We really do need to prepare now. Perhaps as a community, I know as the city, we have a great citizenship here in this town. You know, you ask people for help, and they're lining up, you know? I think it's time to become like the Amish and get it done. No consults, no contractors, just us. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Jane Heath. I'm a resident and business owner in Morro Bay. Tonight, you will discuss, as always, issues of concern to Morro Bay, but I'm here to address a broader issue. Yesterday, I was shopping in Morro Bay and came across a sticker affixed to a city trash can. It was a picture of a member of city staff, and it claimed that this person is in the pocket of developers. I was appalled. Not only is that suggestion absurd, because city staff answers to the city manager and the council and is constrained by municipal code, but it is also inappropriate in public discourse, not to mention defacing public property. Sadly, this is only the most recent example of this type of conduct. We all live and work here. We love this special place. We may disagree about issues that come before us, but issues and policy cannot be personal if we are going to make any progress in resolving differences. Early in his political career, Joe Biden angrily criticized Jesse Helms, Republican, for opposing a proposal to assist the disabled. He suggested that Mr. Helms didn't care about disabled people. Jesse Helms was the father of a disabled child. Senator Mike Mansfield told Mr. Biden at the time, "It's appropriate to question another person's judgment, but never to question what is behind their decisions, because you don't walk in their shoes. You simply don't know their motives. You only think you do." That's not only the high road. It's also essential for resolution, because when you question a person's motives, when you say they're acting out of greed or in the pocket of an interest group, you can't reach consensus. And consensus is where we all want to be. When did we start thinking it was acceptable to treat our neighbors this way? When did we decide that we could make it about a person's character when we disagree with their position on an issue? It's wrong, and it has to stop, because if it doesn't, there is only division and rancor in our future as a city. We can disagree without attacking character. We can go forward to discuss the very real issues that confront our future as a city. I urge my fellow citizens to refrain from personalizing debate. Opinions and positions can be debated, but individual motivation is not an appropriate subject. Think about that next time you want to speculate about your neighbor who disagrees with you. You cannot know what is in their heart any more than they know what is in yours. Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Jane. Linda Winters. And after that, I have no more speaker slips. For items not on the concerned.
I've been sitting way too long. I love this whole forum. This is really wonderful. Thank you to the nice lady who just informed me we will probably flood again next year. I have stood before you for the last five years, and I live in a mobile home park. And I stood five years ago and educated the council and staff that the city has a rent control ordinance to protect all the residents that live in the 14 mobile home parks here in Morro Bay and to help maintain that rent control ordinance. In case you haven't noticed, I come to each and every one of these meetings and only speak about and for the community in the mobile home parks. Because of those speeches, one of our very own council members was elected to the state legislature and was approached by an ombudsman of the group that I belong to, and she agreed to sponsor a bill in the legislature, AB 318. And it's to help preserve the mobile home, the MRLPP, which stands for the Mobile Home Residency Laws Protection Program. It has gone through all the legislative steps to possibly become a law in the state, and I am pleased to announce that AB 318, the bill to extend that MRLPP, is now going to the governor's desk. That's an extraordinary accomplishment for a junior legislator. And when this passes, it will give all mobile home residents in all of California a voice to lodge complaints against park owners, a voice for the common folks. And it all started right here at this very same podium. This is a lesson for us all, how civics work. And I can tell you, it's been a long, long time since I took a course in civics, about 57 years ago. So I want to thank all of Morro Bay for helping to support all of this, and I will see you on October 10th in the next meeting. I can hardly wait for all of the events that we can all attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Public comment is open.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. Terry Simons, Morro Bay. I was saddened to hear that we're losing yet another financial director for our community. I think she's done a wonderful job. I applauded her efforts in the last two comprehensive reports that she's put forward. I have nothing bad or exceptional to say about this former, soon-to-be former staff member, except that it speaks to a bigger issue. As a community, we need to do a better job at our employee retention. We are not doing a good enough job in providing whatever it takes to keep this high quality of person working for our city. I understand there can be lots of other factors involved in a person's choice to move, family situations, and the like, but I would hope that in the going forward, we will continue to make every effort possible to enhance our retention policies such that we don't lose critical members of our staff on a two-year cycle. Thank you.
My name is Sharon O'Leary. I'm resident here in Morro Bay. So we're just finishing up Hunger Awareness Month, so I'm here to speak to gratitude toward the city of Morro Bay for their support of Food Bank Coalition and San Luis Obispo. Food Bank came out to Morro Bay about eight, nine years ago, and we established programs out here from the drive-through program up at Rock Harbor on Saturdays to Food Bank down at Community Dinner every Monday night. And actually, participating with Morro Bay Lions Club, becoming a congregate agency partner with Food Bank, which provides the foodstuffs that we have at Monday night Community Dinner. As of August 24th, we have served 31,457 meals. It's been every Monday for nine years in January. Besides the Food Bank, we have the Community Donations Program and the Resource Office doing outreach, because that is a place where people gather. We've been able to bring in CAPSLOW case management for about eight years now, and prior to that, Transitions Mental Health. So it acts as kind of a hub based on Food Bank providing food and that attraction. So I want to again thank Morro Bay for their support of Food Bank Coalition.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, neighbors, and friends. I wanted to just touch briefly on a couple of items with you. First is just an expression of gratitude to the city council for the special meeting that you had earlier today with the planning commission. Not long after the last election, the council collectively committed to the community a more public process and a more transparent process, and today you delivered on that promise. So I wanted to acknowledge that and thank you for that. I also wanted to mention something with regard to offshore wind. As many of you know, I'm a licensed captain. Some of you don't know, I spent two years on a research vessel after graduating from Cal State Long Beach 1,000 years ago. So I'm familiar with that industry, and I wanted to urge city staff in any direction that the council can give to city staff, that the city capitalize on any opportunities for business, particularly at this early stage. We have survey vessels that are operating now out there in the ocean, and we're the closest port that provides port services, Chandler services, a fuel dock, any other things that these transient vessels may need. So at a minimum, we should be putting together a list of port services that are available to these vessels and probably more preferably reaching out to these contractors and letting them know that we've got port services here available for them. So thanks again for all your efforts to make Morro Bay a better place. We appreciate it.
Betty Winholz, I want to touch on two topics, and one was inspired by council member Landrum's comments about the IP, those wells. And I just want to know if, as the wells are identified or the locations, are there new EIRs for each of those or new environmental? Because if they're not in the same location and they're, I don't know that they are, but if they're moving around, it seems to me that was not part of the original project and that that needs to be attended to. My original reason for coming up was to remind the public that our sewer bills have been suggested to be increased, not our sewer bills, our garbage company has suggested that we raise our sewer bills and that we have under a Prop 218 and that they have the right to protest that. And if they haven't received a form, that they can, if they need to contact Citizens for Affordable Living, we can help them do that. And if they haven't done it and they've got it in their kitchen table, maybe they'll turn it in because the deadline's coming up on October 10th to turn it into the city hall. And I understand that the city clerk, specifically, it was stated in the directions from the garbage company that it needs to be mailed in or it needs to be dropped off during business hours. I'm going to not trust the public and assume that some of them have put them in the slots. And so I'm wondering if you could clarify with the city clerk if those are being accepted or if they're not, and if those people that are doing that need to resubmit their protest votes. So encourage people to turn those in. Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment for items not on the agenda? AGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
Thank you, Mayor Wicksum. Currently, we have Kristy Van Cleve. Kristy, I'm allowing you to talk.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members and mayor. I was so pleased to attend the last meeting. Thank you so much for really delineating the efforts that you've been through on those major projects. I think it's really important that the public is aware of, you know, the efforts that you are undertaking, but also the possibility for the city to really start asserting their needs as well. I know that was brought up with the city attorney. And I would just like to flag one item that was brought up in the harbor director's presentation, and that is the Tumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary comment period that is coming up here by October 25th. And I actually would encourage the city to review that and... And I actually would encourage the city to review that and see if there are any comments that should come from the city side. I'm sure individuals would, can make those comments, but I think if it came from the city, if there are any needs of the city, it's coming already sooner than we may have expected, that we will need to take some kind of position perhaps in order to get an advantage in the whole large process. So the NOAA proposed marine sanctuary comment period is up October 25th, as was mentioned, and through the Tribune article, I was made aware of the fact that the boundaries have been suggested to be modified, and I will quote from the website, NOAA's website, "to adjust the originally proposed boundaries to carve out a new corridor for the industrial development associated with offshore wind energy production." Many of the other areas have not been carved out, so it seems to me that what this is doing is a foregone conclusion, that we, as Morro Bay, small city, are going to bear the brunt of the entire industrial development requirements. And I don't know if the city leaders find that appropriate. Perhaps it is time to, you know, delve into that a bit. I did notice alternative 5A that was not included would potentially protect at least the Morro Bay estuary extension area, that there could be an expanded protection area for the estuary, even if we can't, you know, get around the fact that they need a carve-out to access the cabling. So I would encourage the city to take a position on that while we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment for items not on the agenda?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. And if I can ask just a few questions, because some of them I know we can't answer. Ms. Swanson, could you address the question from Ms. Winholtz?
Yes, thank you, mayor. All written protests that are received at City Hall, whether they're delivered by mail, hand-delivered during open hours, or left in the payment drop box, will be included in the raw count on October 10th.
Thank you. And Mr. Qualick, is there EIR done for those other wells, or will there be?
I don't have an answer for that tonight, but we will be bringing information about the recycled water program, hopefully to the October 24th meeting, and we can cover that then.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will move to the consent agenda. I have two speaker slips to start with. Jonathan King, followed by Terry Simons.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilwomen. I'm not going to bother you with what I wrote. I wrote two emails to you that are in the record, and I'm not going to waste your time with that. But I would request that you remove that item from the consent agenda and vote for it as a standalone vote. Again, and I would request that you reverse your decision upholding the terrible decision of the Planning Commission. And anyway, also, I would request that the city come up with a policy or some sort of statement, a policy. The people at Planning Commission said that this kind of a project was a great thing and they wanted it built all over town. So my worry, I think it's too late to do anything on Marengo Drive, but my worry is that they're going to, everybody that owns a half lot, a quarter lot, or a rump property is going to develop on it like this and ruin Morro Bay, one community, one neighborhood at a time, one street at a time. But I would also request you to reverse the direction to the city staff about making either side of Marengo Drive a no parking zone. That will just cause all the problems we were talking about and make them worse. So that's my request. And I just throw on a side, not related to this, but related to homelessness, nobody's tried, no one has tried broken windows policing. If you look at the writings of Jane Q. Wilson, broken windows policing solves almost all problems that you guys are talking about regarding homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a good time for my computer not to respond. There we go. Madam Chair, Council Staff, regarding the specifics of the consent agenda on item A4, this is the last administrative step in the process. It has been appealed, and I would request that you take separate action on this. And when you take separate action, in section two, I would wish that you would go line by, item by item, because I think that there are several inconsistencies in the way the nine items are presented as compared to the public hearing and the staff reports. And I'll just pick the first one specifically. The vacation of the five-foot section of public right-of-way is supported by the authority of the city engineer. That may well be the case, but nowhere in the staff report, either at the Planning Commission or at the city council, was there any documentation that the city engineer actually made such a decision. There was only the representation that he had the right to do that, or whether he did or not, there was no documentation on that. Then as to section three, the modified conditions, that was modified in the approving motion, I believe that was done by Councilperson Edwards. I would request that she review the restatement of her motion as it occurs in those line items, and specifically concerned about the nature of the two-year extension. I fundamentally don't have a problem with it. I've been in the development business all my life. I understand the need for these kinds of deferrals. But the number, my brain is failing me here. The concern that I had was the reference in the hearing to make that a no parking zone, and yet that never occurred in this report. And I'm fundamentally, like the previous speaker, objecting to the idea that that northerly side of Marengo in front of what could be described as the condominium portion of the project be made no parking. The design of the building calls for all the front doors, plus an individual walkway from the parking strip to the front doors, and it's counterintuitive to think that you should make a no parking area when you've actually designed the entire project to anticipate parking along that street. So I think that that needs to be revisited, and I would hope that you would revisit this as a separate item. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on the consent agenda?
Betty Winholtz, I'd like to speak to item number four as well as number five. On number four, this has to do with that outside person who's going to take care of businesses who want to appeal their taxes or the TOT that they owe to the city. And I sent an email, and basically it says, "I do not see in the ordinance who the tax administrator is, how they are found, appointed, chosen, qualified. Should it be assumed that the appeal fee, which is, I personally feel too high, agreed with the hotel years from last time, covers the cost of the tax administrator's time and not staff time, since the tax administrator is, quote, 'an independent and appointed professional hearing officer.'" So I'm wondering if this ordinance is incomplete. Referring to number five, which was the appeal to the Alessandro Project, and you've probably seen my email already, but I'll go ahead and read it. "I'm going to get a little bit philosophical. The purpose of the law is simple." This is a quote from President Lyndon Johnson. "It does not restrict the freedom of any American so long as he respects the rights of others. It does not give special treatment to any citizen. Its purpose is not to divide, but to end divisions," unquote. So while this quote was directed at a national level, I believe it applies to every level of government, including our local government. And so 1140 Alessandro Project, as proposed, was divisive with the neighborhood. And I purposely tried to create an appeal to address the neighborhood concerns without financially overburdening by eliminating the Alessandro improvements or creating financial redundancy planting, pulling out, replanting for the developer. I included public benefit at the union of Alessandro and Marengo while giving the project common open space that is unusable in that right-of-way. So with regard to the three sections of the resolution, in light of the concerns that still exist with the neighbors, as you've even heard here tonight, I think B, G, and H are not true, and that you need to readdress those. And in particular, letter I, that states investing and occupying in our neighborhood. So I'm never seeing this before as a condition, and I'm wondering if we're trying to turn our neighborhoods into businesses and not places of living. So I question that finding. And then with regard to section two, I did submit an addendum to the original, and I've listed here five things that were not addressed during your review at the last meeting. The Alessandro abandonment, discerning the property line at Marengo, the retaining role on Marengo, not upholding the shall setback that's required in MCR across from a residential zone, which really you have no right to change, and then whether or not there's a necessity for a stop sign. And then with regard to resolution, section number three, there were two amendments that were added. One was the deferral of the street improvements. And I want to address the term referral. This does not exist in our zoning code, either the current one or the proposed one, and therefore it's something that I believe staff takes upon itself to utilize, not necessarily bad, but that they take it upon themselves to use this action. I think the consequence is, when this happens, that it becomes a tool that we, the public, don't know about. And such a tool or action should then be codified in our current zoning ordinance now as we're rewriting it, so it's obvious and available to everyone, not just who happens to know how to work that with staff. And so otherwise, if that doesn't happen, it does, and it is perceived as favoritism. So I'd like to make that deferral in our zoning code. And then the second part of that is the maintenance of the public right-of-way seems to be a fairly low price to pay for giving away the right-of-way along the length of Marengo, plus the right-of-way on Alessandro. Thank you.
Anyone, excuse me, anyone else for public comment on the consent agenda? AGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
Thank you, Mayor Wixom. There are currently no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close the consent agenda and bring it back to council. Does anyone want to pull items on the consent agenda tonight?
I do. A4 and A5.
A4 and A5. Anyone else? Looking to my right, looking to my left, I'll look for a motion, please, from someone for A1, 2, 3, 6, and 7.
All right, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve on the consent agenda items 1 through 3, 6, and 7. Sorry, A1 through 3 and A6 and A7.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Landrum.
Yes, just, I would like, if we could get clarification on the, where do I have that? The tax administrator and how that person is chosen, and the answer, maybe the questions that were asked.
Councilmember Landrum, I can address that. So I believe Ms. Winholtz is referring to the hearing officer, not the tax administrator. The new code provides for an independent hearing officer to hear appeals. And in the code, in section 3.24.110D, it says that the city manager shall designate a hearing officer for an administrative hearing. The hearing officer shall not be a city of Morro Bay employee. Compensation for the hearing officer shall not be determined by the outcome of the appeal. This is standard practice when there's an independent hearing officer to be appointed for hearing appeals in a city to have provisions like that. We have same provisions for independent hearing officers for the relatively recently adopted short-term vacation rental ordinance, and also, I think we had one also for the cannabis permits, for an independent hearing officer. So hope that answers the question on that.
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions on item A3? No? With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve item A3.
I move that we approve item A4.
A4. Excuse me. A4. Thank you. Second on that?
I second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Okay, I had, I had concerns about some of this. I mean, the way I see this situation, I agree with Ms. Winholtz, that I think that we are setting ourselves up for really unhappy neighbors and a lot of, you know, arguments and things like that in the future, the way that this looks to me. I had a question. I didn't really look at number five, I mean, B, that she has called out, but my questions were G, H, and I. I was confused by the term occupation. Is that like, is that, does that mean someone's occupying the building, or is that their job? It seems unclear to me.
It's simply living in a neighborhood.
Okay, so it doesn't mean their occupation. Because these are live-work, so it's kind of confusing.
Yeah, just literally just living in a neighborhood.
Okay. And then on G and H, to me, the design of the development is compatible with nearby existing uses and will not be detrimental to, I have a problem with the comfort and general welfare, well, maybe even the safety, because the road is narrow and that we're creating a traffic, a possible traffic situation there. And then also on H, the proposed vesting map will not be detrimental to the orderly development of improvements in the surrounding area and will not be detrimental to the orderly and harmonious development of the city. And to me, harmonious and orderly could be threatened by this situation. And then in section two, I, five and six, on five, the, let's see, the appeals objection relating to impact to neighborhood is unsupported by the findings and evidence, because although this project will produce more vehicle trips than a vacant site, the hearing discussion also noted that the project will eliminate the, oh, this is where I had the problem, "current issues of illegal parking on the site and trespass." So the site is all, it's all fenced off. There's no way to illegally park there unless you broke in with your vehicle to park there. So I don't know how you could park there. I'm confused by that one. And then on number six, let's see, the installation of frontage improvements can either be required at the time of project construction, such as in the case, such as is the case with Alessandro frontage improvements, or deferred, as is the case for the public improvements along Marengo. Why did I highlight this? I guess it's the, I'm not sure why I highlighted this. I don't think I have notes on this. Let me see. Oh, I think it's the time. It says time here. That's my note to myself. So it seems like, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have notes on that one. But could you answer the others for me or address those?
We'll see. So these are, you know, the items, the lettered items are findings that you're making. And those findings are relative to the issues that were raised in the appeal. City council added simply two conditions. You amended condition three, and that was to include the deferral for two years. I would also make a note, since I would also make a note, since Ms. Winholz raised it, that the deferral process is not in the zoning code. She's correct. It's actually in the City's municipal code, Chapter 14.44. And it grants that deferral process and authority to the City's Public Works Director, Mr. Qual. So it is in the ordinance, it's just not in the City's zoning code. It's actually in the City's municipal code. Moving on from that, then, the City Council added the requirement to maintain any landscape in the right-of-way. So everything else, every other issue of the appeal, the council denied, basically. So we provided findings to support the decision that the council made at the last meeting. And so that's why those read the way that they do.
Okay. And does everyone else, does anyone else here not think that this will be an issue with the neighbors?
Just for clarification, Mr. Graham, there was a comment about the no parking. We, that went away, correct? We did not include that.
You did not include that, and our take was you sort of left that to the discretion of the City's Public Works Director.
Right, because we required the curb gutter sidewalk, within two years, we took away the no park. So just so that the neighbors.
You did not add that condition to the project.
Right, we did not have that condition, just to verify that that condition does not exist. Maybe just, you know, there was a comment by a neighbor, and the housing rules in the state have changed. And so, I mean, there's only so much we can control legally, correct? I mean, I'm just looking that, you know, there's a concern about this size of project on this size of lot and the potential for ADUs, but following the state guidelines that are being handed down every day, this meets the rules. I don't want to be doing something that is going to be counter to what the rules are coming to us as.
No, I mean, this location allows for multifamily development, it allows for mixed-use development. This project is both of those with the live-work units. It is compliant with the City's development standards that apply to this area. It is, and your planning commission, you know, voted for one to approve the project. The issue that the one planning commission had that didn't vote for it was simply related to the public improvements of the corner and didn't really have anything to do with the design of the buildings itself. So, I mean, that's what the resolution that we brought back to you, it just supports the fact that the project's compliant with the City's development standards, compliant with the zoning, and again, that the City Council, in their majority vote on this item, did not find issue with the other issues raised in the appeal, but did say, you know, maybe the deferral thing shouldn't be forever or undefined, but should be a shorter amount of time, and that if you're going to put improvements in the right-of-way in the form of landscaping, they should be required to maintain them. And so we put conditions in this that were reviewed, were reviewed both by community development and public work staff to make sure that they were enforceable. And so that's kind of the process this went through after it left your hands at the last City Council meeting.
Thank you. I'm just looking for clarification on the rules for, you know, there was a discussion about conversion to ADUs and things and parking requirements, and, you know, I note that a lot of this, and it's tough, because one hand, we're saying we need housing in our community, affordable housing, housing opportunities. This brings housing opportunities, but it also impacts the community in which it's coming in. One side of the street, maybe not at all, because it's a mixed-use, more commercial area, and the other side of the street that's going to be forward-facing is a residential street already. But, you know, to deny housing would be counterproductive to our goals also. So, you know, I have concerns, but I think that we did the best we could to address those.
Mayor, if I could interject just real quick. So this resolution is actually capturing a decision the council made at the last meeting. And if the council would like to have another public hearing, then we could notice that. But the council already voted on this, and this resolution was before the council at the last meeting. All of this language was before the council. The only difference is Section 3 was added. And Section 3 captures, I believe, what the council's decision was. Council certainly could have another public hearing and revisit this. Those who voted in the affirmative for this at this meeting could ask for this resolution to be rescinded. But this resolution is just being brought back as a function of there is time needed to craft the language for Section 3. Otherwise, this resolution was before council, and council's already voted on it. So that's why it's uncompetitive.
Thank you for clarification on that.
And I'm glad that the parking has been, the parking situation has been eliminated, which I think will help. And it, yeah, I still don't like it, but.
Okay, well, with that, we'll move for a motion to approve item A5.
I'll move approval of item A5.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our one business item, item C1, and I'm going to turn it over to community development, please.
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. Just give us a second here while we get the presentation up, and I will jump into the item.
Thank you.
All right, this is a continued item from your last meeting, as that meeting ran late. So we moved it to this item, to this meeting. So what we're requesting, one, is authorization from the City Council to approve staff to submit a $500,000 grant application to the California Coastal Commission for updating the city's waterfront master plan. And then secondarily, I'm requesting some direction related, from council, related to the waterfront master plan, like update process. Some background information on this item, we were approached several months ago by Coastal Commission staff that there was grant funding available in their next round of grant funds. And they talked to us about opportunities and items in our current, currently adopted general plan, including implementation items and policies that relate to sea level rise and sea level rise adaptation. And we came up with some ideas, and they supported those, and so we are here this evening. The grant is non-competitive, meaning we will get some amount of money. We talked with them again about a couple of weeks ago, and it sounded like the scope that we were suggesting to them would probably garner the full $500,000, but we'll see. The city has previously gotten similar grants to update its general plan and zoning code to the tune of about $600,000, covering four separate grants. This updated the city's waterfront master plan is identified in General Plan Policy LU 8.1 as an item, and it's also included in your 2023, 2025 goals as an item to accomplish. So it takes care of two of those things. If council were to authorize staff to submit the grant application to the Coastal Commission, we would probably do that within the next three to four weeks. Probably would take us a couple of weeks to prepare it. We would have their staff review a draft of it before we officially submitted it, then we would officially submit it. And then their response back to us on it would be due 30 days after that. This grant can be stacked with other grants or can be combined with other grants. Some of the things we were thinking about is looking at some of the greenhouse gas grant money that's out there as well, that we might continue to look at as another opportunity to, you know, support this effort. City's waterfront master plan was developed in 1996. It includes multiple planning areas, it covers transportation, circulation, covers improvements to the harbor, some of which have taken place, some of which haven't, and covers improvements to various other areas that are covered by the waterfront master plan. Again, some of those improvements have taken place, others have not. And then the water, and then we do have waterfront design guidelines that are utilized in the approval process that you see for our lease sites on the waterfront, when those items come before you for review. At a minimum, the update would need to cover the Morro Rock parking lot, because that's consistent with our general plan policy. It would need to update our sea level rise projections. And then we would need to look at our infrastructure relocation program and developing that, and specifically developing triggers as to when we would need to raise infrastructure in association with sea level rise. It's kind of tricky here on the central coast. Sea level is rising, but so also is the land on the central coast, so not quite as maybe damaging as some other areas in the country. So I am seeking council direction this evening as well, related to what the scope of the master plan update might include. We do have a desire on a staff, from a staff standpoint, to look more comprehensively at improvements along the waterfront, and so we are interested in incorporating the east side of the Embarcadero. Right now, we just do the west in the waterfront master plan. We'd like to include the other side of the road, just so we can look at that area again comprehensively. We think it might be a good idea to incorporate the pedestrian bridge that goes across Morro Creek, and then maybe to incorporate and have it cover the area where the old wastewater treatment plant is. We have another general plan policy that says we're going to do a master plan for that property, but we could just as easily incorporate it into this effort. So would be interested in council's thoughts on that this evening as well. Couple of other opportunities here, we do have, you know, offshore wind talking to us now, and who knows what that might look like, but this might be an opportunity, this is not saying whether we want offshore wind uses in town or not, it's just, should we take a look at it as part of the master plan process, since it covers the waterfront? And so we might be able to do some evaluation related to that. So I'd be interested to hear council's thoughts on that. And again, the incorporation of the old wastewater treatment plant site. And then is there a desire now or in the future to form some sort of council subcommittee to assist with this process? Maybe even, you know, including, you know, members from our planning commission and harbor advisory board, Embarcadero Master Lease Holders Group, Commercial Fishing Industry, Maritime Museum folks, that type of thing. I don't think you need to necessarily make a decision about that last piece tonight, just is there a desire to have some kind of council subcommittee or other committee that we might utilize in forming the RFP, informing the RFP and reviewing the overall master plan itself as we work through that process? Assuming council moves this forward. If you don't, you don't need to worry about any of that, I guess. Again, at the end of the day, we're asking you to adopt Resolution 64-23, authorizing us to submit the grant application to the Coastal Commission for $500,000. So with that, I will end my presentation, and I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Graham. With that, I will look to my left and start with Councilmember Ford, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. And Mr. Graham, I appreciate this item that you brought forward here, as well as Ms. Jay Synth's work on this. I don't know why I got tongue-twisted on that. I do have a question regarding the, okay, so you had mentioned that we already, our focus has been in one area, you're wanting us to consider, of course, if we move forward with the grant opportunity and in this development, to look towards the old wastewater treatment plant. How far in the other direction going south? Can you explain where?
The current parameters of it stop at Tidlin's Park. You did receive correspondence from Sean Green, I think, suggesting that maybe we incorporate some areas to the south of that. We do have lease sites down there, right? Bill Martin's property down there has lease sites out in front of it. There are lease sites in the water that are out in front of the end of Morro Bay, and so there are areas down there that aren't currently incorporated into it. We also don't have, like, the harbor walk in those locations, and I know there's, you know, there's been talk, even through the general plan update process, about extending the harbor walk down in that area. So if there's a desire by the council to maybe give some consideration to that, I'd be happy to add that as well.
Okay. That's the only question I have for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
I really appreciate you mentioning the fact that the piece about the master plan and from the other project and kind of working that into this potentially, so thank you for that. I think that my question that I had was pertaining to, my big concern always traffic circulation, and if we're including going from now the bridge and over to the old wastewater treatment plant, if that's being incorporated into this as well, if it would be.
So, yeah, if the council were to extend the master plan across the bridge, that is exactly the thing that we would be looking at there. We are looking at it as it relates to the Vista master plan as well, but we would also be incorporating that into this master plan effort as well, if that were to be the desire of the City Council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum?
I wonder, see, the last time we did this was '96?
Yeah, this is when the waterfront master plan was approved, yes.
Okay. We haven't had any other master plans?
Update to the waterfront master plan, no. It's set largely as it is now. I would say the city didn't do a lot of implementation related to it. So, you know, I don't know. We largely use the, you know, the design guideline component of it as we review projects along our lease sites that front the water, so the harbor.
And then if we move towards doing the old wastewater treatment plant, that would be a joint effort with Cayucus, correct?
I mean, we'd probably have to need to talk to them about, you know, moving that effort forward. You know, we're getting the grant application and getting grant funding for it. I don't imagine to be too objectionable to them while we figure out, you know, what our partnership with them looks like on into the future. I mean, I know those discussions are going to be coming forth here in the not-too-distant future.
Okay. Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
As I was listening to this, it was all sounding great until I was reminding myself that it's, this is like a $500,000 grant, and that seems like the possible parameters of this project have gotten huge, and so I'm just sort of wondering about how we might reel it back into something that we can.
So that's a fair point. You know, it, we'll know once we, you know, I mean, if council authorizes this and we obtain the full $500,000, we'll go out with an RFP, and we'll see what we get for our money. You know, it's, you can, you can do all the work, or you can, you know, kind of like lighten some aspects of it to get things that we need to do the whole plan. So some of it's, you know, like, if you were looking at areas south that people have requested, the south of Tidlin's, as Councilmember Edwards discussed, that, we could do those things, and simply the outcome of that could simply be that, yes, we want to put, as those lease sites redevelop, we want to extend a harbor walk down there, and we could do, you know, as kind of a minimal amount of work on what that might look like, and then that could be in the document, and then those folks, when they redevelop those sites, could do it, and it would be very inexpensive to do that. Not a huge effort. So you do have to kind of scale things up and down based on, you know, the amount of money and what the cost would end up being. So I appreciate the comment. It is a lot, but, you know, it's, I think it's within the realm, and we would be able to get future funding out of future rounds of the Coastal Commission grant if we were, say, unable to find some other grants to stack on top of it, which I fully intend on pursuing, because there are some climate action grants out there that would work nicely with this, because we're doing climate action planning inside of it, or we would be, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you just answered some of my questions. It was about, and I know when we talked before, you said this was basically an idea of first-round funding, that it certainly would be more than that when we've talked about this before. So pros and cons, you know, of casting that wider net to look from, you know, the decommissioning wastewater treatment plant all the way down to the end, is it better to look at the whole project, break it into sections, or is it better to just bite off a piece? I mean, this is going to take years, like everything does, to get done. It's been 23 years, and I don't expect we're going to get this done in the next year. It'll be a while.
Yeah, it's going to be a long process. I do think the timing of it, since we don't actually have money to do a master plan, a separate master plan for the wastewater treatment plant site, this is a great opportunity for that. So I think we can do that underneath the guises of this project, and I think it will help us. We're already working with Coastal right now on what the, you know, the demolition of that property looks like, and, you know, we've had several meetings with them, going back and forth with what that looks like. And this, I think, is kind of a good opportunity to ensure that we get the full $500,000, is if we were to extend this here. They're very much interested in what that might look like, and they've expressed that to me. And so I kind of like the idea of putting it in there, because they've said, hey, that's a good thing, you should be doing that soon. When do you think that's going to happen? And we're like, well, I don't have any money to do it right now. So that was one of the conversations that we had when we discussed opportunities for the grant.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that the wider we can get, the greater opportunity, at least, to start the process. Thank you. With that, I'm going to open public comment on item C1.
Terry Simons, Morro Bay. I was very excited. Having recently seen the product of some of the RFPs on other outsourced planning issues, I'm very concerned. It's one thing to send out an RFP to coordinate our local standards with complicated state initiatives and these sorts of things, where you need to have the abilities of people who are working statewide, or at least regionally, to discuss what other communities are doing. This is Moro Bay. This is an intimate look at our own community, and I think that we need to keep this project as focused to our own staff and our own people as possible, particularly since we have an existing waterfront plan. And while it may not be complete, there may be some voids and stuff, fundamentally, I don't see that a new plan for the bulk of the waterfront is going to be very complicated, because it's already there. There'll be the nominal discussions about walkways and building aesthetics and these sorts of things. But let's face it, most of the waterfront is already developed. There are a few spot areas that may need some consideration. But fundamentally, what we're really talking about is these expanded areas. Now, one of the expanded areas, particularly if you jump across the Embarcadero, would be the up-and-coming large project to provide for development opportunities of the parking lot, the old restaurant in the parking lot above it. I would think that the potential developer of that property could be an instrumental member of the team that would help develop that portion of the master plan. We don't even have to hire an outside consultant. We can just make it available to whoever's interested in that property to say, hey, we want you to work with us at your cost to help us come up with a plan that we all can live with. I think that's smart policy, at the very least, to have your potential developers working with your city planning agencies to come up with a comprehensive plan that they already agreed to, rather than negotiate some sort of sale of a public opportunity and then have to run it through another process. So that's a thought. We have the Vistra-funded master plan that's coming up for the old PGNES site. So there's a lot of money and a lot of work being done on that, so I don't think that's going to be a particularly large draw on this waterfront master plan. So what does that leave? That basically leaves the crossing of Moro Creek and the redevelopment of the old sewer plant. And we should be able to do that and tune up the rest of it for $500,000 and keep the money in-house. Think about what $500,000 really means in terms of internal staffing. You pay a typical employee $150,000 a year. That's three full-time equivalent employees plus some staff support. You pay an outside consultant, and you're going to get $500-an-hour employees supported by some $200-an-hour employees, and you're not going to get much for your money. So I would encourage you to keep it in-house. Thank you.
I really want to pick up on Councilmember Barton's point about the finances, and Mr. Simons spoke to that as well. I don't think $500,000 goes very far these days in these kinds of projects, particularly if you're going to go out to an RFP. If you went with the ad hoc committee instead, then you've got more money to do things, and you have local people saying what is appropriate. So my initial thought, as I was listening to everyone, was you need to stay within the Embarcadero from this side of the bridge down to Tidlins and see what that looks like. At the minimum, you want that project accomplished. The other pieces become extra, in my opinion. And though it may be desirable to include the sewer plant, that really isn't part of the harbor. It's really behind the dunes. It has different issues, including Cayucus. And I don't know how Cayucus would accept, yes, it's free money, but are they going to get offended that we stepped out and did something without them? It's such a balance when you work with that other community. So I would encourage you to stay within the bounds of the bridge to the Tidlins, and at least make sure you get that done, whether it's through the ad hoc committee or the RFP. But that's your goal, because that's the piece that hasn't been done. And then the others, if you get other grants, then you can add those pieces on.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP.
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. There are currently no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on item C1 and bring it back to council for any more questions.
I would like to know, is it possible? I didn't even think about this. Can we have an ad hoc committee do this? The majority of this work, maybe not the?
Well, you don't have staff capacity to take this on. We simply don't have enough staff. I mean, I have two full-time planners.
Well, if you -- would you still get the grant, and you could use that money towards staffing, or?
It doesn't really work that way. You know, you really do need to hire professionals here. We would need architectural services. We would need some traffic services. We would need things like that to do it. It's just, you know, we're thinly staffed. You know, most of our staff work on current planning projects, with the exception of Cindy Jason, our planning manager, who's, you know, right now managing the zoning code update piece. So we just don't have a lot of staff folks, and we're going to have turnover right now. We have our part-time planner. She's leaving, so we're starting that recruitment. So just, that would be a pretty heavy lift with all the other stuff that we have going on. It's, I mean, the best way for us to do it would be to hire a consultant, you know, to carry forward the update.
Thank you.
I have a question. So you're going to work collaboratively then with Public Works, Harbor, and the three departments are all part of this?
Yes.
I mean, you're talking about circulation, parks, all those things.
Absolutely.
Both sides of the Embarcadero. Okay, just, yeah, okay, thank you. Councilmember Barton, questions, comments?
I like the question that you just asked, and that makes it clearer about who should be involved in this.
Councilmember Edwards.
I just have one question regarding, if we were to keep the same original borders from, you know, within the harbor and not going any further south and not looking at the northern end where the old wastewater treatment plant exists, could it still include the bridge or that exit as part of the circulation plan that exists within that border? Would that, could that be included if we decide not to move forward with the other side of the bridge?
I think, I think one way or the other, we have to evaluate circulation. It's one of the most important issues that we have over there.
Okay.
Argue that it's not.
So if we, so tonight, if we do not give you guidance to move any further than that area, the bridge would still be addressed within the?
Circulation would be addressed, yes.
Circulation, okay. That's my only question. Thanks.
And do we have to tell you whether we want to do east and west sides? Or is that assumed that?
No, I'm not assuming any of that. That's just the, those are the thoughts that I had when I looked at it, is initially was looking at, we should probably look at both sides of the Embarcadero. It's kind of weird that we just looked at one. Understand, it says waterfront, but really, the waterfront is that whole area along there, and I think it makes sense to plan for all of it. And then, and then again, we were looking at the areas across the creek, one from the circulation standpoint, and then we talked about the wastewater treatment plant, just because the general plan includes doing a master plan for that, so.
Yeah. I, you know, in talking with the wind farm companies, the wind developers, I told them that we're talking about doing this and trying to get them to give us some idea of what they're, what they're, you know, thinking. Of course, they didn't tell me, but it just seems like it would be great if we could know more about what they're doing, because this is such a lot of money to spend, and then, you know, it just.
I mean, I do think, Councilmember Landrum, that that opportunity is coming, right? They're going to be engaging us more, not less, in the future. So, you know, if that was the desire to include that piece of it, at least for us to, like, have, start having those conversations as it relates to the context of the master plan, I think it's a good idea. It's kind of why I raised it for your consideration. Certainly, it's entirely up to you whether you want to include it or not, but I just, it's not saying that we're going to do it, or, you know, we're going to have an O&amp;M facility here or any of that. But taking a look at that through the, you know, the lens of a master plan makes, I think, some sound sense.
Well, I agree. It's just that they couldn't tell us whether they were doing it or not, you know, what they would be using our harbor for, really, or not. They couldn't commit to any, anything, so.
It did seem to indicate that they would provide more clarity later on down the road, I think, is, I mean, I guess probably the nicest way I could say it, meaning they weren't ready to, like, reveal their cards at this point, is what's my sort of take on the conversations I've had with them, so.
How long does something like this take?
Probably going to take a couple of years.
Okay. And what would be the process to involve Cayucus if we did want to go?
I mean, we would let them know certainly that we're doing it. You know, you can do a master plan on property that's not yours. We're really actually kind of doing that on Vistra, as an example. But we would let them know. I mean, they're, right now, they're part owner of the property, so we would need to engage them, and they can engage as much or as little as they want. I mean, they're probably just interested in the city coming up with some kind of economic use for at least portion of it.
And in order to do anything with that property, you have to do a master plan first?
That's what our general plan says.
Okay.
Yeah. Short of carrying out the coastal development permit for the then-water reclamation facility, that includes decommissioning and demolition of that facility.
Okay.
Regardless of the unknown of the participation level of offshore wind, there's still so many other facets that you would be working on that it would be, to me, irrelevant, just talking about circulation regardless, you know, what the issues we have during the summertime and the impact down there. So I think there's so many other things already that, once you looked at what you could achieve, stage one, stage two, wind would be down there, because it is an unknown, like other things, so. Comments? Councilmember Barton, anything? To my right, to my left?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
So we know that we have to do a waterfront master plan at some point. We know that's something that we have to, we prioritized it, we know it has to happen. We have this amazing opportunity to take, you know, $500,000 that we don't have to pay back, we don't have to match, we don't have to do, I mean, you know, so there's that opportunity. So my question is, you know, why would we, okay, that's kind of a broad question. I should narrow it. If we were to limit what we were creating the master plan for because of the $500,000 amount of money, I think that that, I don't necessarily agree with that, because I think that we would probably have to put money forward anyway to start generating a plan in the future as an investment as a city. And we have this $500,000, like, launching pad essentially to, like, get it going. And so I hate to, like, section things out. I think it's important to look at items such, that's so important, like, our waterfront from the harbor and further along to this area that is underutilized right now. I think it's important that we look at it from a high level and kind of have, because if we were to stop at just the bridge on this plan, which we know is, we've heard from our community, we've heard from our business owners, we've heard from our tourists, we've heard from our locals, how inhibiting that lack of exit and entrance into that area during events, or, you know, when any time of the year where we have a lot of traffic, it becomes a problem. It becomes a safety hazard, and it becomes just an issue from people getting from point A to point B. And so we know that we have to address that. So I feel like looking beyond and going, what could be beyond that, and looking at the big picture is important to do all at once. Whether we, I think we should have an ad hoc committee. I will be recommending, I recommend that we do that. I think it's important that we have a group of concerned stakeholders and citizens that truly want to see a successful waterfront operate, because of safety, because of circulation, because of functionality, because of, you know, what can Moro Bay become, but why do we want it to stay? Those sorts of things I really think are important to have that input. So where am I going with this? I guess what I'm saying is, I support the grant opportunity. I will be voting for that tonight. I think that we should have an ad hoc committee. I definitely agree with what the recommendation, I don't have it up here, but what it stated. You know, I don't know that we have to specify those specific members, or if you're just looking for a?
You don't. I just gave examples for you.
Okay.
I think if you decide to have a council subcommittee for this, then that subcommittee can decide who you want to have on there. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
And we could move that forward. I'd also offer up this, since multiples of you expressed concern about the expansion of the footprint of the master plan, we could just incorporate it into the project description that we send for the grant as an option. And then we could do the same thing with the RFP. You know, it could be an option that we have them propose on as an extra, and then we could see what that cost is.
Okay.
So if you're interested in that, I'd be happy to do that. That's often done in RFPs, so.
I can make a motion if we're?
Yeah, I'm going to ask one more question. On the examples you put on here, the offshore wind, the possible formation of the ad hoc committee, and I think that, you know, I'm hearing consensus that we're interested in having an ad hoc committee to assist with the master plan, RFP and development of the plan itself. Are we needing to define, and I'm thinking we don't, who all those members are? You do not need that tonight.
I do not. I just proffered it as the starting point for the conversation for council. Like, I gave some thought to who might be on it. And that's, I mean, it's really up to you. If you want to form a subcommittee of council to do this, then that subcommittee would be the one that probably chose who the advisors are to it. I was just giving examples of folks that operate and, you know, entities that operate on the waterfront that made sense to me.
Right. No, yeah, it's just how far a net we want to cast. What is the projected timeline on when you think we would hear from the grant and when we would get it?
That's good. We'll probably have our applications submitted to them, assuming you move it forward this evening, within three to four weeks. They said, hey, give us your draft application. We'll review it and draft, give you any comments, you can fix it, and then officially submit it. And then they said, once we officially submit it, they'll respond in 30 days.
Okay.
So we're probably a couple of months.
I'm just looking at the timeline with an ad hoc committee we already have with the downtown design district, and I don't want to overburden staff, council, planning commission, all these entities. HAB's already working, looking at some other items and things, so if we can clear some of that through a little bit before we start into it, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, there's, I mean, once we get the award, I mean, I think there's like three or four years in the grant. I forget what it said.
Okay, so we have a little window.
We do have time. We don't have to start it. And part of that time can just be spent kind of putting together the RFP and deciding when you want to release it. So it's, there certainly is time, and I am also cognizant of the other efforts that we have going on and how much staff time we have to work on them, so.
Right.
Yeah, I agree that that's.
Well, and considering that it'd be the same three of you that are working on downtown design, Wharf, and HAB, so, yeah, it gets a little much.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. You want to make?
Okay. I move that we adopt Resolution number 64-23. Can I just say, as it's written here, except for to add on, I mean, to clarify that it, from Tidlins Park to The Rock, including the bridge, and that we pursue a conversation with Cayucus to include the former sewer treatment plant in that as well.
Would you want me to include the, as an option in the grant application?
The sewer treatment plant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Could I, could I ask, please? Thank you, Mayor. I'm so far away from Mr. Graham, so I can't really signal him that. But let me just ask this question here in the public, so everybody can hear. I appreciate Councilmember Landrum's very specific suggestion to the resolution. I wanted to ask a question to Mr. Graham, who is more familiar with the process, in that, is that, because our goal is to receive the grant and then give us the most flexibility to utilize the grant, and therefore, is that going to be a concern to be so specific, the boundary and who is going to be involved and all that? And I think that's more on the direction and policy level, which we heard it tonight, where I thought the grant, the authority resolution itself, already the authority resolution itself already covered that intent, and then when we apply and on an application, and with city council's direction, we need to reflect the direction that we're going to include a lot of, we're going to include public comments and public participation as part of the scope, and also partner with our regional partners. So I, I think my suggestion is that if, unless Mr. Graham disagrees, let's keep the resolution relative to the way it is, and, but city council can add to that with these directions, and then we'll just comply with your directions, rather than, you know...
So it's a good point that you raise, Ms. Kimball. So part of the conversation that we had with the Coastal Commission regarding the amount of the grant had to do with some of these items, and so they would need to be included in the application, and that's the bridge, if we want to include the old wastewater treatment plant site as an option, if we wanted to conclude consideration of offshore wind, just with that, whatever that means in the context of the master plan on the waterfront, those things are, will be a help for us to get the full $500,000.
I would like to include the offshore wind as well, and also, I don't know if I clarified, I meant east and west side of the Embarcadero, too.
So, just for clarification, you want all that in the motion, or are you just moving the resolution and we're using that as direction? I guess I'm looking for clarification.
So it would be moving, yeah, we should be moving the resolution and then providing the other portion of it as direction, and then, yeah.
That's what I'm asking, but she's including it in the motion, so that's why I'm asking, do you want to withdraw the motion or amend your motion to have that as a caveat of it, or are you trying to actually put that in with the resolution, Councilmember Landrum?
So I'm, so I'm happy to, I think probably the best course of action to move it forward would just make a decision on the resolution, to give me authorization to submit the application, and then, second piece, provide me direction on how to move forward. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So move to adopt resolution 6423, authorizing staff to submit a grant application for California Coastal Commission Local Assistance Grant Program to fund the update of the city's 1996 waterfront master plan in the amount of $500,000, according to the scope outlined in the staff report.
Okay, I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I think you have enough direction.
Well, I need, I wanted to get...
You want to get a second?
I need some...
A second, okay.
I need some concurrence, yeah.
Okay, so I, so I'm making a second motion?
Is that how you want that?
My understanding is that when the application is submitted, the more that Scott says we can do with it, the more likely it is we're going to get the $500,000, so I think he's seeking direction to specifically say that we are interested in adding these other items. It doesn't mean that we necessarily have to do it, because it's a grant, we can decline it, but we're going to maximize our ability to get the half million by letting Scott have direction to say, and add this other stuff as possible uses of the grant, so I think he's looking for a list of stuff.
Well, I think, yeah, I think you got that from us, didn't you?
Yeah, and Councilmember Landrum did provide the list. What I just don't have is the concurrence from, you know, a couple of other folks over there.
So you're going to expand the boundaries to include wastewater treatment plant, The Rock, down both sides of the Embarcadero.
And the bridge.
And the bridge.
Yeah, that's included.
And the offshore winds.
Wind in the wastewater treatment plant site would be an option.
Yeah, but I want to be real clear that with the wastewater treatment site, we need to really include Cayucus in the conversation at all, you know, from the get-go.
That's second.
100% agree.
Okay.
That's not part of the...
So that would be a motion then for council to pass, it would just be a minute motion, so Scott officially knows that you guys have approved it, I guess, is what he's looking for?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
So you have a motion.
So...
So it would be, you know, I move that Scott Graham be given direction to add the following items to his application.
Okay, I move that Scott Graham be directed to include the items we met, can I just say the items we've already discussed?
I have the list.
Okay, all right. Can I add a friendly motion?
Let me get a second first.
Oh, sorry.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Sure. Okay. I was going to ask for a friendly amendment, or is that the right? Okay. Do we need to add in the creation of an ad hoc committee? Does that need to be in there?
That was already corrected.
Does that not matter?
No, that would be a future agenda item, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I would add that in, I think that's a great idea.
Well, again, I'm sorry, I think that participation is something that this granting agency is going to look for heavily, right?
I'm sorry, excuse me, City Manager Kimball?
Yeah, the agency, Coastal Commission, so, public engagement, public participation, and ad hoc committee can be part of the direction. I don't, I, if this were me, I would just say public engagement, public, and then participation, and as one, he writes a grant, he will put those keywords in there, and then they'll include ad hoc committee, and then the citizens may want to evolve, and also future public meetings, and because that would be scope of the grant, right, Mr. Graham?
I mean, those would be things that we do as part of the, as part of the update, I mean, for sure.
This is going to come back to us several times.
Right.
You're going to see it a lot, yeah, so, I mean, if the idea is that we bring back the committee as a future agenda item, then we can do that.
Okay, so that does not need to be part of the direction?
It doesn't have to be, no.
Okay. City Manager, are you saying that it's advantageous for the grant to have that understanding, or is that what you're saying?
It's my understanding with the grants that it will be beneficial if, when we write it, or we put all these public, we lay out, we plan to use this money to do this plan, and part of processes include public engagement and participation and regional partnership, and, you know, I'm looking for Mr. Graham for correction.
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would include that in it anyway. I mean, that would be, yeah, yes, that's true, so you're correct, yes, thank you.
Okay, that clarifies, I'm taking back my suggestion for a friendly motion, or friendly amendment. All right.
Are we good?
We're good, we can vote on that one?
All over the place. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Everyone's good. I'm looking to my right, looking to my left, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are we good? Everyone's good? Yeah. With that, we will move to future agenda items. Anyone? To my left, to my right. With that, I will remind everybody, our next regular meeting is December, or December, it's one of those nights, October 10th, 2023, 5:30, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.